Okay, let's call this meeting to an end. It's 6:08. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, we have a few meetings to approve.
What have I been doing?
Well, we had a whole bunch of emergency meetings and we had some free votes and...
Some.
Some, some. Okay. So, do I have to read all these? Can I say list as... Data. Okay. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes from May 7th through August 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Hannah moves and Heather seconds. Okay, is there any discussion about any of them except Joy that were true?
Can we not do that again? Instead of getting it, there's no...
Let's never create a list of six meeting minutes.
Summer meetings.
Yes, six summer meetings, exactly. Okay, we are all here, so we do not need to do a roll call. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, sentience.
I have an abstention just for the August 5th because I was...
Okay, okay, so we have an abstention for the August 5th. And...
Wait, do I have to abstain from August 5th too because I wasn't here either?
Yeah.
I was on the phone for like a hot second and then you got called.
Yeah, I think Beth and Heather abstain for August 5th. Okay, so A through E is five to nothing and F is three zero two. Okay. Is that good for our minutes?
It's good.
Okay, do we have any public participation or announcements?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, we are moving. Although, do we have, well, you probably have them in your principals report, like upcoming dates, so we'll just...
Yes.
Yeah, okay, let's go to the administrative report.
Alright, here we go. Wanted to start with some highlights. We have had an awesome, awesome first few days of school. Like, it has been so positive. The vibe throughout the building is just on top of mine. It's really, really wonderful. So I wanted to highlight with a few pictures, got some middle school kiddos on the left working on a group work challenge together. They were trying to, there's like all four strings and they were trying to stack them up into a pile. We had some great students in our PTO help us. We did a chalk the walk for kiddos, but we had a PTO and some students do it for teachers. So that was a little surprise for them coming back on the first day of school, which was great. We had some second grade kiddos having some fun on that third picture. And the next one, we, especially with our littles, right now it is a lot of modeling, teaching, reteaching, going over expectations, building those routines and procedures, which is critically important, especially in those first six weeks of school. So that's what our, especially K-1/2s, not just exclusively, but largely K-1/2s are working on. I wanted to highlight, we did some really intentional work that started at the end of last year, but continued into our in-service when we have all staff. The end of last year, we worked as a group of grownups in the school talking about agreements and how do we work alongside and with each other as adults, knowing that the relationships that we have between adults here in the building trickles down to the vibe and the feeling of students across the building. So, in the spring, we landed on those six agreements that you'll see down below. They derive from courageous conversations, which is some work around having discussions around race and other, what could be considered, you know, challenging conversations to have with people. So these six agreements are, the agreements are staff agreed to live by and work alongside with, stay engaged, speak your truth responsibly, listen to understand, be willing to do things differently and experience discomfort. The next one's hard, especially for teachers, expect and accept non-closure, that one's really hard, but, and confidentiality. So we're working, not just saying, oh cool, these are our agreements and then we don't do anything about it. So in the, when we came back in August, we did a small group work with all of the staff. We had all support staff, all teachers, everyone that's in this building we had here. And so we took advantage of that time and did this opportunity where we looked at each of the agreements and asked ourselves questions like, what do you need to hold yourself and others accountable? What might make this agreement difficult for you personally? And it kind of triggered a lot of really good conversations with small groups of staff. Yeah, so it was really, really positive work and it's still not done, right? It's now we're gonna begin to have the conversations around how do we call each other out in a way that still feels okay and that we can have those tough conversations when situations arise, because they will, you know, between adult situations arise. So that's what we're going to continue working on moving forward, which is really, really exciting for all of us in the building.
How, and maybe I'm gonna address this to my show, how did the new staff that were coming in merge? Because it sounds like you guys did some work at the end of last year and then we're bringing it in, so how did that...
As a new staff, I feel like it was really easy to be integrated into it.
Okay.
And the energy of the new staff in particular has been fantastic. To a person, it's been really nice. They've been integrated well and they've been accepted really well, but they also each bring really positive energy. And they aren't timid about bringing that energy, they're bringing it shamelessly and happily.
Sounds like they'll do great in Heartland.
It's honestly, it's been such an amazing start of the year. It is, because like hearing about something that happened last year and then like you don't wanna, it's a feel like it's being stuck down somebody's throat and it sounds like these are good.
Three of them have said that it was their best start to a school year so far.
Woohoo!
To me individually, and asked me the same question and I...
Go Heartland!
It's great. It's a great, great start to the school year.
That is fantastic. And we needed to work on that, isn't that like...
Yeah, it is.
It's been really, really intentional work and it's work that I've been really clear that it's, it's not a, we've done this once and now we're done.
Right.
It is, yeah, it's, it is work.
Process.
Yeah, it's process and it's ongoing and there will be bumps in the road. It's not if, it's when, you know, when those bumps happen, we are anchored in those six agreements and how we have those conversations with each other, which is great.
I wanted to bring a couple things to you. We had West, our student rep who's on the board, West left, living her best life, I think, at KUA. She did help me out over the summer, which was great. I contacted her mom and she got me in touch with West and kind of outlined for whoever, if the board wants to continue with a student rep on this board, West has outlined for us what she did typically in her student report. So I have that ready from West. If you all give me the go-ahead that you want to continue this, what I'll probably do is reach out to Abby Fusco. She's our middle level social studies teacher and it makes the most sense for me to partner with her, have those conversations with middle school students and we would go through the same process that we went through the last time.
What is the process?
So essentially here, I can fill it up. It is, but... It's just that it's a hair week. It walks through that you've gotta be at least a seventh grade student to apply and they need to exhibit these qualities. We would share this document with students and families so they had an understanding of what it would entail. So if a student is interested, they would get signatures from three students and three teachers who say, yeah, we believe this student would be a really good fit for this role. They meet with myself as well as Christine, just to have, nothing scary, just a conversation really around like, why do you want it? What makes you interested in doing this work? And then they would meet with you all for, I think, another similar short interview around what makes them interested. I think it's, you know, important that, to lay out their responsibilities, which are down there as well, that they would be expected to attend, all that is reasonable, you know, it's, they're also middle school age kiddos and things do come up and I know that you all get that really well.
West was amazing.
Yeah.
She was here every single meeting.
She was.
And she even had theater, which I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah. So this, if the board is in agree, agreement with it, we, I would take this board and with Abby.
Absolutely.
Okay.
My only suggestion is that like, if, is there a student council or student...
It's a weird... There's a student, yeah, lighthouse team.
Okay. So like, if we couldn't find one person who is interested, maybe opening it up to that group to say like, you know, one of you per month should come and just be a student representative to just like do the student report, like if no one wants to, no one wants the job, just have that opportunity to be like, there is a seat at the stable and it's, you know, like, so it'd be great out to anybody to say.
Yep.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Heather. So I'll direct this question at that. So how do we feel about board members' kids?
This is the worst part of the year.
I know.
Already.
It'd be convenient.
I know, it's true, it would be convenient.
There's a conflict of interest, you mean?
Well, I don't think there's a conflict of interest. I think it's just a lack of diversity, like, I don't know. But they're also representing the kids, not the family.
Not me.
Right.
And I believe, you know, like whatever student is chosen is chosen because they are best for the job.
Right.
And if we felt that a board member's child was best for that, I think that, you know, I guess they're not representing us.
Cool. Yeah, I just wanted to have that discussion ahead of time because I do picture some board members' children being...
Really, really like.
I'm gonna say no to mine.
Thank you.
She was already saying...
Yeah, you're welcome.
Community service hours.
Yes, we do service hours to check through.
The next is a playground update. You know, we talked a little bit about the playground, but our in-house team, we're gonna meet sometime. If it's not this week, it'll be the beginning of next week to figure out logistics and I'll send those out, not only to you, but also the PTO has already expressed interest and wanting to help as well, which is wonderful. The tentative dates are the 10th and the 11th, which is the Thursday and Friday moving into Indigenous Peoples' Day, or weekend on the following Monday, so that would be, and because it's only the structure, it may have to only be one day, but they wanted to just make sure that they've secured enough time in Ulti Play because they'll still send two to three representatives.
And it can't be weekend day, it has to be a weekday for their staffing?
They typically do Fridays, Saturdays, but we had shifted to this thinking that people may travel on that extended weekend. That was, that was the thought.
It's like it was a half day.
And Friday is also a half day.
I just think about, you know, if we, if we just will miss, I mean, hopefully we get plenty of participation, but just rising and, and you know, people who are working full-time just won't be able to participate, which is fine, as long as there's enough people that are not working full-time.
Yeah.
Well, and if we could offer some childcare to, like, if people are just like, oh, can't go.
Yeah.
On the half day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Community service hours.
Community service hours, are you done?
So, we will send out logistics as we get them, so now it kind of gets out of my area of expertise of which large types of equipment we need for certain things. So our maintenance staff is going to help us figure that out and we'll put out a call for support pretty soon because I want to get these, these dates as well as the list of items and things needed sooner or later out to the community.
And now, is this phase one of playground or like, is there a phase two for other things that need fixing or redone or such like that?
Definitely, yes. I'm still working on and applying for any grants that come our way. I have a list of them that I was able to have access to. The challenging part is there are some grants which is not eligible for due to the free reduced percentage numbers that we have, which eliminates some of them.
But maybe if we all fill the forms out this year?
We are pushing, I'm pushing them. Yep, we're pushing them. And there's an electronic version and maybe this is a good time, especially I tried it with my own two kiddos and it took me...
Less than a minute?
To fill the electronic version out. It's really, really quick.
The paper thing that we did in a blue packet?
Yeah, that's a blue sheet. Now, is that different or is that the same thing?
It's the same.
That's it.
Okay, they're coming home this weekend.
Yeah. So yes, it's a, we'll end up Heather, both sides of being a multi-phase.
Okay.
There's still work that needs to be done and upgrades that need to be made. This was more of the emergency, we've gotta figure out this situation, but telling, there's more work to come.
And is there, like, is this playground big, like, real bigable? That is like not the right word in any way.
Expendable.
But like, so like, is there, so for right now, because I know that like the original play structure was gonna be like really, really big, do we have room to like add on, I guess is the right word?
To the, the structure that we're putting in, I'd have to ask Ulti Play, but there is also still the ability to, you know, if we're at a place where we're ripping out the rest of the things that are not that structure, then there's a lot of options that we could have available for us.
That'd be awesome.
Yep. And the next is a budget advisory committee that I wanted to bring to you all. So there is a form attached and I can share it if the board would like to have a budget advisor, advisory committee. Share this to them, here we go. Um, it would be shared out to, open to anyone.
Yeah.
And this form up here goes into a little bit of the logistics of what it might be like if someone was interested, so they have a little bit of understanding of what they're getting themselves into before they sign up. And they, we would start meeting probably November.
That big so I can see that, because I feel like I'm...
Is that better? Is it possible just to make our screen just the shared or do we have to have the cameras on?
Uh, I think we could have a shared screen.
We don't have to see ourselves.
Yeah.
We need to look at ourselves.
But I can zoom in a bit more.
Okay, that's good.
And would school board members be involved? Yes, a school, a school board, a board member.
A board member, thank you, okay.
If, if you choose.
Would you like me to read this out?
You can structure the committee the way that you want to. If you just, if you don't want a board member on the committee and you just want the administrative team and the budget advisory committee presenting the budget to you, that's...
No, I think it would be really helpful because the purpose here is to have open lines of communication, right? With non-board member community stakeholders, so I think it would be important, I just, I'm just thinking we're, you know, just about what that means in terms of people, you know, meetings for people.
Yeah.
So the purpose of this is, as Hannah just said, like this idea that like, last year was a little crazy and we're trying to get a group of community members, hopefully, not who are just in the school, but outside of the school, to like join in to like you, is it for them to help with the budget or just, like, what is exactly going to be their job?
Because I think it's, I mean, yes, to help with the budget, but the budget is really the responsibility of the administration. But to be educated in the process of developing a budget and it's more people, I mean, so a lot of communities are doing this now. This is not unusual. And the idea, let me rephrase this. Some of the comments that we got were that we were doing our budget in a vacuum, which we very much were. We were doing all of our budget in public session. But this way, like, I mean, it alleviates that, it provides somebody besides the school board to help under, to like back up what goes into the budget and the decisions that are made. I, I think this is really important and I think we absolutely need to figure out a way to engage people sooner than the election day. I worry a little bit, A, about, again, just realistically adding a night of meetings for everybody is challenging and I also worry a little bit about this becoming a little bit siloed, just knowing how complicated this stuff can be. It's going to be more complicated this year. Clearly Vermont's gonna make some changes at the legislative level. Right, well, I mean, and knowing that, you know, there can be miscommunication, is there a way that we could just embed a, you know, budget advisory within the board meeting time? So that it just sort of ensures that the data that's being presented is not just the same, but actually identical and it reduces the likelihood of miscommunication and it allows in the moment feedback and discourse with the whole board and it reduces the number of meetings. Yeah, I mean, the way that it's worked, the only community that's had an active BAC is Weatherfield. And they meet sometimes on, in the evening, but during the day in hybrid meetings. Really what happens is, right now we're convening the SU Budget Committee. They're gonna have their first meeting on Friday. And it's really just an overview of the budgeting process, what it looks like. They'll meet in September, October. That budget will go to the SU Board in late October. It might get approved that night, it might not. It's important for that budget to get set before we work on the local budgets because we need to know what the assessment's gonna be. So, Octo, late October, November, December, really, the way kind of I see it working, Lindsay's gonna be working with Larry mostly, developing the budget. And then, she's gotta have something to start with when she's meeting with people. And then she's explaining it to the budget advisory committee and there might be questions and it might lead to changes in the budget. And then it's presented to the board, so... I see, so you feel like the more important discussions between Lindsay and the BAC, more so than the BAC and the board? Yeah. Got it, okay. And that's the way it's worked in Weatherfield quite successfully. I think this year, the BAC, a couple of the members, because it was such a difficult year, came to a couple of board meetings to support, help explain back up the budget to the community, but they haven't always done that. I mean, it's... Okay, I see. Yeah, it's really to get feedback. I mean, Lindsay is the administrator. She's the expert in the budget and what's needed for the school. It's important to get feedback and even talk to constituents about it, but that's also the role of the board, to be fair. But I know we're trying to make it transparent and open and communicate as much as we can, so I see, yeah.
Is advisory the best word for this? Advisory to me means like you are advising, like, so, like, are the people who are on this committee going to be like, Lindsay, I believe that like this part of the budget, advising you to do stuff, like, is that...
Yeah, I mean, I think that's like way new. I mean, it doesn't mean she has to do it, but it's like a very...
It's a little more advising. Yeah, maybe a better word, Heather.
They're my thing, they're my thing.
I just feel like advisory is...
Typically within a school district, I think at least around the area, it's called a budget advisory committee.
Right, so there will be that sort of consistent language and you will know what to expect from that committee.
Lindsay, is this something that you would like, like?
I think it's, I think it's important. I think it's important to try to get opinions and thoughts from, because as we can see, there was not many participants that typically come. As much as we love more and more, there's not many and this might offer an opportunity for someone who maybe can't make it to a board meeting have another way to participate. And I've seen in, in communities too, there's sometimes people that are on these types of committees that then end up being school board members. So it's a way to also kind of get someone else's foot in the door, if it's something that they're interested in and if or when a school board position becomes available, someone at least has a little bit of knowledge.
That's a good point, yeah.
I mean, it just engages people earlier in this process. That's what we need, right?
We just hope that people get engaged, I mean...
You might have some interest this year.
I don't know.
I'll be your, uh, I'll be your Weatherfield's advisory committee.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think, a board member, Brian, and I'm gonna say there were three or four community members last year. It's not huge, but...
Is there any, like, where didn't, like, what, how did they pick the community members? It's just three people that wanted to be on it or was it?
Nope, they have to write, what did they say? So they would say, it would be your name, are you a resident of Heartland, what is your address, phone number?
They do have to be a resident.
Yes. Yes, more, you know, how do we get in touch with you? The cell phone, email, why do you want to, which I think would be that point of like, what kind of qualifications do people, does someone have? And are you able to commit the time, because it is a time commitment. You could add, why would you like to join and what are your qualifications for being a...
An advisor.
Yeah, yeah, the same, I could add it to the question.
We're a little afraid that that will chase away people that maybe don't think that...
It doesn't need any qualifications for a study.
Yeah.
Because you're gonna be teaching them.
I mean, we're not qualified in any way to be school board members. I mean, no one asks for my credentials.
I mean, I just, what if you, what if you have 25 people, how are you gonna select them? You don't want...
I think we have to go through, why would you like to be on the budget committee?
Yeah. Yep, and just, that's enough information to figure out.
Yeah, but we could phrase it as to help us narrow it down. Why would you like to be on the budget committee? So that...
Yeah.
So that it's clear to people that they need to write something.
Yeah, so I can add that to the beginning part of that question, why would you like to be on the budget?
Yeah. Yeah.
This would, would this also include like any community member, even if they don't have any kids in school?
Yes, I would hope so. I mean, that's kind of what you want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like you kind of want, yeah.
But I don't think you can fully ignore that.
Well, I was just thinking, we're gonna have to be a little bit careful that this is not viewed as any type of like litmus test type of questionnaire, right? That like this, we're not trying to weed out, you know, so we'll just have to be a little careful if there's a lot of people interested that...
Yeah. And if there's a lot, then we need a different process to figure out who...
Then we, yeah, if we have to go to a lottery or...
Yeah. So then what we would do, I can have Linda, I think the listserv would be a really important place to get this link out to, put it in the newsletter, we can send it out as a mass separate notification, the way Linda will do occasionally. So we set three different ways in which to get the message out to community members.
Do you see what another, what another way is? Because unfortunately sometime with listserv, like you're gonna put this out, you're gonna have people be like, oh, that budget! And like, it's gonna immediately go, people complaining about the budget again, as opposed to like, you know, like, oh, I should do it in the budget advisory. Like, what other way, what other ways we have to like get things like, I know you can like...
Front porch forum and then there's a new one.
But like, I mean, there's like, I don't know, how much effort do we wanna put into it, like do we do like...
I hate the listserv.
I know, I do too, the listserv...
We could have a sign in front of Damon Hall.
Yeah.
One of the...
Or... Yeah. Like local news, like is there like a newspaper that like...
Sounds like Kurt Peterson, we're gonna have to get him on the job.
I know.
Yep.
Or maybe Kurt Peterson just wants to...
Yeah, check with, um, with Tom Manager. Sorry, you could then write the report.
I've never met him, I wouldn't be able to pick him out of the crowd if he like...
What is the news, I can't recall.
He'd be in the media.
I'm sure it'd on his.
Yeah, I'm sure it would.
The Valenew is the standard, Vermont standard, um, mountain times? No, that's Kurt Peterson.
That's, that's, you know.
Yeah. Eagle times?
We did, is that, is that just Vermont Digger was the other one?
The Digger now, but did we use that one? I don't remember. I will find out, because it's good.
And Christine, or like is Windsor doing a budget advisory committee? Sorry, not just got any, how are they?
Same, they're putting it in their newsletter, goes to the front porch forums, they're handling it. Well, intent, our intent is to see. I was just thinking, I mean, just having available applications at the town hall before coming in.
Good morning, I'm Cliff though.
Oh, yes.
Already, I can't believe I'm paying this. I'd have loved to join the buzzer just to have it.
Yeah, I've got something to say.
Yeah, and then they can learn what the budget, has nothing to do with tax rate?
No.
Did we want, then, the question on the listserv? Yeah.
Yes, just do, I mean, like, I'm just waiting for like, you know, like, please join and then...
That's fine, people can show, yeah, people should show up. I won't respond to anything. No, none of the students, like, is board members.
Well, I did.
You did.
Yeah. So I will have Linda do that. Some upcoming events that we've got, starting next week, we start Finding Our Stride. And next week, we also start the Drama Club, our back to school night.
It's Mondays and Wednesdays.
I wanna say is it 3:30?
At 3:30 to 4:30, do you, if you wanna do it and you wanna bring your tool on Mondays?
We'll talk afterwards.
Okay, good.
The back to school Title I night is the 26th. We'll start with a little Title I presentation at 4:45, followed by community dinner and back to school night from 5 to 6. And picture day is 10/1.
That's a good schedule. Russell already got us.
Is that for us?
Yes, we'd love your, we'd love you to come and get your picture for the rest of the.
Yes, please do, that'd be great.
I like everybody else's.
Can we dress up like we do in our school, like really awkward?
Sure, you can do whatever you want, just goes on the website.
Yeah.
It just goes on the website, it's just for the public to see.
Yeah, it's a way for public to identify who the Board Members are.
We could do it, we've never done it before.
He cut up, he just wanted his hair, he just wanted.
You can also just take a picture of yourself and send it to Lori, but, or you can come and get your picture.
He's super handsome. He doesn't have his locks of love anymore, I didn't.
So you decide. And if the picture, you know, the school picture isn't what you want, you can get a retake.
I'm sending them to my parents. You should make your kids put them in their, like, little wallet.
Oh, like, put them in their, in their locker?
Yeah, that's my mom.
Okay. We went somewhere else. Back to our goals.
All right.
You are in charge of them.
Yes. Do you want me to just skip to the next one?
Yeah, okay. So I've just got, um, uh, here we go. So, um, I'm gonna just gonna share a little bit about the opening of school and how that went and, um, an upcoming training for you all, I hope you will consider attending. So we, um, as Lindsay said, kind of really, really upbeat, energetic, positive opening of school. It started with onboarding new staff and we were able to negotiate an additional day for new staff in the contract that was settled in June, so we adjusted the calendar and we had two full days with our new staff, which is not even enough, but it was much appreciated that we had two full days with them. Um, it started with frontline training with Tina, there was some curriculum, um, training with, uh, curriculum, um, team, Patty and Angie. All new staff have to take the ninety minute Alice training, that's our school safety, how to respond, so they had to do that. They had some seven habits training, they had time with their mentors, they had time in their buildings, which was wonderful. Another pretty exciting thing that happened this year, we, we sent three support staff members to, um, a support staff member training, uh, last spring. And it was to start a support staff mentor program, which is something that the support staff have been really asking for. They feel like they get thrown into things, and they do, um, not enough training and support. So we had three, three, um, support staff members go, they actually wrote a grant to help fund it for this year and they received that grant, I believe it was seventeen thousand dollars. So they can pay themselves and any mentors, yeah, it's, it's been great. And they are, um, they have invited staff members who've been hired, support staff members who've been hired in the last two years to participate. Some people that just didn't get that opportunity or having that opportunity, so we were thrilled about that, it's great. And then we opened, um, we opened school, uh, last Wednesday with, with, no, two, is it two Wednesdays?
Sometimes flying.
Wow. With a welcome back in service, we started with gratitude, because I feel like that's a really important place to start. So we honor our new, new, um, staff with, um, some swag, some lunchbox.
Betsy, who was, what was that, forty?
Forty years.
Forty years, Betsy McClure.
Forty, forty years.
Wow.
So they, the staff get, um, five year, ten year, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, and the numbers get smaller and smaller. Betsy was forty.
Yep.
She was reigning in the district too.
Yeah, she was the only one for her, so, she got a personalized gift, because when you put forty years.
And, and still be fabulous, Ruby had her last year, you can't stop her.
No, she is, she's amazing, she's just adapted, yeah, so. So we started there, we had to do, um, some harassment in Title Nine Training, which is just the way of the world these days. Tracy Price had a good portion of a day with the entire staff and she, um, is quite an incredible presenter. She's just a natural and makes it look easy and people are really engaged. We talked about agreements, which is something we've all been working on, Lindsay, um, Lindsay shared those, uh, agreements. And each school has similar ones, a team has similar ones, we're all kind of working to create this culture and agreements are really important to be able to do that. Uh, talked about identity, common vocabulary, what is equity, what is equality, what is diversity, but those types of things to all get on the same page. And then we reviewed policy, so, um, as a whole staff, we reviewed the anti-racism policy and procedures, the equity policy, the transgender policy. So, um, that was a really good, good use of our times of old staff. And she'll have another full day in January with the staff to continue to work, which is exciting. Curriculum plan for the year, we talked, the high school's doing, uh, really engaging with AOE and some proficiency work, which is exciting. The staff had some self-directed time, which, um, I can't tell you how many staff members just came up and said, thank you so much, um, for the time, it's really. It didn't feel hectic and rushed and, um, one of the things that I shared with them was that, you know, we, not, not me personally, but this AOE and just, um, administration, you know, they've had a lot of new initiatives on it, like the last, I don't know, decade or, yeah.
Yeah, it's the.
It's a lot, so we just said, no new initiatives, we're gonna get good, we're gonna refine what we're doing and I think that helps to set the stage as well. Yeah, I mean, I told them, I mean, EQS is coming and the new literacy law is coming, so we're gonna take a long break there, but, you know, next year we'll have a.
What, what is E Q S?
Education Quality Standards, yeah, they've been adopted, they are, they go into place in July of twenty twenty-five, July one. I think half a dozen of the admin team are gonna be engaged in a year-long training on EQS.
So who's funding this? No one.
We are, yeah. But we're gonna be, we're gonna work on how to really, um, make sure we're embedding, embedding those in all we do, so.
I think, I wanna give a shout out, um, to our middle school team, um, cause I was here doing, I promised Torgan that we would walk through her schedule on Monday. And they were just a team and it was fun to see. I mean, like, the, you know, the backside of adults trying to get ready for something, um, you know, yelling down the hallway and doing things for each other and just like keeping track of what everyone needed to do, it was just really, like, I just walked out of there like, this is so cool, everybody's working together and.
They seem to be, they have a good, strong leader, team leader, who's helping to keep things on track, which is great. And only one new staff member.
Is middle school six seventy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they seem to be.
Yeah, yeah, I'm hearing great things too, I just like that, the, the sense of camaraderie and we're all in this together. It wasn't like one teacher doing the things to get ready for their classroom, it was like all of them doing all the things to get all of their classrooms ready.
Are stronger together.
Yes, it was really cool.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what we're trying to foster, so that's great to hear that, so.
Yeah.
Um, we're sending out a debrief, um, to the staff, just to see how they felt, you know, opening, how school went and I can share that with you when this returns. And the last thing, woo-hoo, really exciting stuff up here. The V S B A conference is October twenty-fourth and twenty-seventh. But they're doing it a little bit different, I think it's Thursday, late afternoon, evening, um, so not all day Thursday. And then I think there's a dinner and a celebration of public education that night and then there's training the next day. So anybody that's interested, you can go for all part or, um, if your schedule doesn't allow. It's, um.
So one, one last night after.
It's usually a really, um, I, the conference is usually pretty good.
The conference is actually usually really good and it's, it's, um, encouraging.
Yeah, so anybody, anybody that's interested, just email Lori, she will get you registered. Don't give pressure, I know you're busy, but wanted to present it as an opportunity for you, yeah.
Fiftieth birthday, but I have to wait that week.
One of those days.
It does, um, if, if you go Nikki, cover your training for the years as Board Chair, but there's other ways to get that.
It goes on the fiftieth birthday.
Like that day. So that's not happening.
Happy birthday, Ronald Lake.
I know.
We're all celebrating your birthday.
At a school board conference. No, no, I was just, just sharing it out for you.
Right.
If it works for you.
Yeah, yeah, no, it is actually a really good conference, so if anybody can be on time, it's, it's worth it.
Awesome, so that's it for us tonight.
Okay. Awesome, so, uh, items for discussion is kind of a follow-on, um, to the administrative report. I think we've covered the student rep and we're in agreement, um, that we're gonna move through that. If that's unanimous consent.
Yep.
Um, the playground update, we already voted to expend the money, so we're, we're good there. And were there any, I assume there were no changes to the finances of it?
Okay.
Um, and I think.
All grand pleasure.
All grand pleasure.
We need to go, Lindsay.
That's awesome.
No, no, no.
And, not to, I hate to harp on this, but if we were to get in a situation where we just couldn't get enough people for the weekdays, is there any flex?
I, it might depend in, because part of it is also the schedule of multi-play.
Right, 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 that's what I mean, are we pretty committed to those dates?
Right now, yes.
Okay, okay. But it's, I'm sure there'll, I'm sure there will be enough people.
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder what the, I wonder.
What is, how many people do they want?
Yes, that's my question.
How many, I, ten, five, it's, it's not tons and tons.
Okay, okay.
I want the maintenance team.
Yeah, so during the school day, we'll additionally have the maintenance team, which is.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, it might be nice, um, we did it in court a long time ago, um, and, uh, there was a group that was in charge of feeding the workers.
Yes, I did talk to Ian about that. He was more than happy to, to help in any way that he can too.
What?
Ian, we're listed as a structure, yeah.
Well, that's right.
They went to Chris, yeah.
Yeah.
My kids were commenting on the new pizza.
Yes, yes, new crust, I heard rave reviews, I, I got a taste test going for it, yep, the crust.
I've heard that as well. Ruby was like, the pizza's different, I was like, good.
That's great. You shouldn't do it twice a week. Same, you pack your own or you was there?
I mean, that's right, I'll do it, I will do it for the little people, but not the second grader.
Oh, never even did it for the little people. You're off. You there or you're out of line?
You have the old, I feel like, deserve.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Actually, I haven't taken a pizza in a while either.
Wasn't my strong point. Uh, and the Budget Advisory Committee, we agreed to move forward with it.
Yep.
So we're good there. So, setting the next agenda, this is, um, where Christine and I and Lindsay have been talking and I think we've mentioned it at Board meetings. Because there's so much work going on at the SU level, there's a lot of redundancy in our meetings and we're also getting really good at flying through them. And so we were gonna propose to skip the October meeting. Um, and Christine had actually created a schedule of meetings that were appropriate to skip.
There's only two.
There's only two.
But, don't worry, we'll make up for it.
Yeah, I know, exactly, yeah, Christine, like, there were six.
You did a lot of meeting lunch here.
I will make a motion to skip the October meeting.
Okay.
Make the motion that you need. Sure, okay. I mean, I wanna show the public that there was thought that went into this, it's not like us sitting around and being like, hey, let's not meet next week. Now Christine went through like important milestones in the year, um, just showed it with you all. Okay, so we'll make a motion to skip the October meeting.
So does that mean like in lieu of that, like we should go, like we should attend the?
The big, the floor installation?
Well, the big, and that is, if you can, great.
S U?
Okay, yeah, the S U meeting, yeah. Yeah, if that frees you up to attend an S U meeting, that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Certainly not gonna say no to that. You can't vote at an S U, right? Um, okay, so I have a motion from Hannah, her second?
Me.
Okay, Brian, okay, Hannah makes a motion to skip the October meeting, seconded by Ryan, um, I think we've already had discussion. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, pensions?
Can I ask a question, like, if something comes up, like, we need to do an executive session, then we have to.
Yeah, 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 as always.
Yeah, no, we have special meetings, an emergency meeting.
Got it, okay.
We can do anything we need, but, um, there's.
Put off making a decision.
Okay.
If you need to do it.
Sorry.
I mean, I, it's just kind of a recognition that our agendas are a little light and that I think, as much as we all enjoy being together, um, we can skip a few nights. And it'll be right around the time of the playground install, so we'll go install a playground. Okay, so that, uh, for record keeping, that was a vote of five, zero, zero. Okay, so, uh, the next agenda will be November, which will be budget season.
Budget November fifth, yeah, preliminary budget.
Are we there already? Can we take?
We skipped October.
Well, preliminary, it'll be very preliminary in November.
Um, so we'll have a preliminary S U budget by then.
And should, um, the Budget Committee will already be meeting? Probably starting to, yeah, you can have a preliminary budget and BAC update.
Are we hoping to have the BAC in place, like ASAP?
Probably by end of month. Yeah, yeah, cause I'll, you can have Linda send it out through this week, you'll be in the Wildcat Wednesday this Friday, Linda coming out with the list serve this week, so we'll.
It seems realistic.
You don't need to like.
We can, um.
People, right, like, is that not something that's?
We can, yeah, we can either delegate to Lindsay and Christine to approve people or, um, we can approve people as long as we don't talk about it. So we could like create a ranking and guide selection, I don't know that, I, I don't know that I need to be involved.
Is it better that we're not involved?
I think it probably might be.
Because maybe you'd be less wise.
Yeah, that's what I think too.
I'm trying, it sounds like I'm just trying to share responsibility.
No, I think that's, I think that's wise, Christine and I, we have figured out, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Um, is there any else I never heard of?
Playground, do playground update.
Yeah, playground.
And then we have on here, um, student growth report, we're gonna try to come back with the data, disaggregated as well, as much as we can. By gender, by pre-reduced, I, it's just our academic data.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the star data, yeah.
And we had, um, in, in the work plan, which I shared with you, uh, teacher or student presentation of learning, if you have your student on the board by then. It's good to, it's good to hear from the kids.
Yes.
Or the teachers, of course.
Great, okay, so I think that that's the budget, um, budget.
Agenda.
Agenda, the, the budget is the first thing on the agenda, this is my brain. Okay, uh, so now we move to, uh, an executive session, which we need to have. And I brought my candy laminated. How to run an executive session, so, here we go.
Whoa, is this what you get at this hotel?
No, this is what they mail to you, apparently, through the chair.
That's what we get, congratulations, the board chair is your fancy.
Here's your fancy laminated.
It's open meeting law.
It is, it's open meeting law, but, um.
I haven't.
You can go for it.
But I have to figure out which one it is, okay, I think it's, um, I think we're under, yes, we're under, uh, V S A three hundred thirteen A one, um, and this is relating to a contract.
Yep. You got it.
Okay, so, uh, I'm, so the first motion that the Board would move is I move to find the premature general public knowledge regarding the, oh, regarding a contract clearly places the Board at a substantial disadvantage because the Board risks to closing, no, but this isn't, whatever. I don't know how to read this.
There's so much I love about this.
We're gonna go into executive session to discuss the contract issue, isn't that like?
Thank you, yes, this is like, holy, holy.
That way there is too much.
This is too much and it like is hard for me to even translate it into this issue, so, um, it's a contract issue. Motion?
Motion.
Heather, Heather moves, Beth seconds, uh, all those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pensions, okay.
At six fifty-six.
At six fifty-six, we can stop recording. And.
Do you wanna go in the conference room?
Is there an action afterwards, or is there not?
There, uh.
You're like, no. We're organic here today.
Okay, so we're recording again. So, um, we have nothing, no actions based on the executive session, um, but we do need to, um.
Hannah has to make an announcement.
Yeah, so I unfortunately will be unable to participate in the S U, um, Budget Committee that's gonna meet on Friday mornings, as previously committed. Um, and we were looking to see if there was anybody else that might be interested.
What time is it?
Eight thirty.
Oh.
Nine thirty.
So it is, like they say, it they say, this Friday, at eight, now, if, if there's one you can't make, Ryan, we take minutes